Evening. The Newburgh Planning Commission will come to order this May first. And we'll get a roll call.
Jason Dale?
Here.
Laney Quinn?
Here.
Chris Wright?
Here.
Abby Seitz?
Here.
Mike Griffiths?
Here.
Linda Newton-Curtis? Absent.
Okay, Tom, I'd like to open the floor for any public comments that are not related to any items on the agenda for the evening. Seeing none, we had nothing on Zoom. Okay. Okay. Moving on, we have in front of us a continuation of the, from last month for a quad judicial hearing, but I believe we do need to read, read the announcement. So Abby, would you please take care of that?
ORS 197.763 requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applic- applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in, in appeal of the case to the Land Use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at the Land Use Board of Appeals. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of the approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its necessary need to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on the, on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through the continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to call for abstentions, bias, expertise contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Seeing none, hearing none. Move on to the staff report. So went over most of this the last meeting, so we're just, unless anybody has any objections, we'll just kind of do like a, like a review of the highlights and, and then the applicant, I believe, is going to give the presentation. And between those two things, I think we'll have everything that we need to continue. And if we don't, we can always ask questions. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jeremiah Crombie, Associate Planner for the record. I believe Faye's going to bring up the PowerPoint from. Slight update for today. So once we get that up here. Okay, will you get the clicker here working? That would help if I turn it off. So skip ahead, just there's two kind of parts to the application request. The one being a phasing modification to the Kalina at Springbrook subdivision, and then the other being the Springbrook Master Plan Development Standards Matrix date. Reminder, it's north to Mountain View, west to Hess Creek where the subdivision is. So just a quick recap of the phasing plan changes. They split one open space track into two lots in phase one and two, and then add phase one and a half around about a traffic signal. And then split in East Mountain View Drive between phase one and also 1.5 and three for timing, better timing with stormwater. Re-numbers some lots in that phasing plan, and then clarification on when adjacent improvements are to occur. There's a quick phasing map that it changes there on the right. And then down on Mountain View. So there's five conditions of approval recommended as part of the phasing plan. Lot renumbering is one of those that was consistent with the original plans. We do have a condition of approval in that. The proposed timings only pushed back one year. The matrix amendment, except for the change to the minimum lot width of 20 feet, applies to all the low-density residential in the Springbrook District, which is highlighted here. But only applied to the west of Hess Creek for middle housing, which is shadowed in the right hand, or on the right-hand side of the map, or the right side of the slide, I should say, on the left side shaded in there. So that's where the rest of the changes would apply. So that would allow that middle housing lots to have the 20-foot lot frontage, as mentioned. Additional design standards that would change from detached duplex to middle housing. Middle housing is your duplex, triplex, quadplex, cottage cluster, townhouse. The other proposed amendment was to reduce the driveway separation to 20 feet between those units. And then the other two items allow shared driveways to have a 24-foot wide access utility easement with a 16-foot wide pave service and then some clerical fixes. Last amendment to the master plan was happened last summer. It's part of the subdivision and matrix updates. Master plan update, I should say. Which required additional review if they wanted to update. And this is the quadplex configuration the applicant has proposed. This has our 20 foot. So just a quick look at the master plan. We did recommend not allowing for the 22-foot driveway separation in the recommendation. The applicant has indicated, as you've seen in materials, that they're okay with that. Would you have three conditions of approval related to this? We did send out a supplemental memo, I believe it was yesterday, just to add exhibit F and the resolute part number two, just to clean that up. So we would recommend adopting Plan Commission Resolution Number 2024-393 with that update. I think that's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Any questions before we move on to the applicant? Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open public testimony. And the applicant will have 15 minutes. Proponents will have five minutes, the primary opponent will have 15 minutes, and opponents will have five minutes. And then the applicant will be given opportunity for rebuttal, should any of that be necessary. So please state your name into the microphone. And proceed.
I'm Glenn Sutherland. I'm a land use planner with AKS Engineering and Forestry. And first off, I want to say thank you for having this special meeting. We really appreciate it. Obviously, there were some, I don't know, new things that we're all learning in consultation with the LCD to get these types of processes taken care of and adopted by city council. So again, do, do appreciate your time tonight. So again, I'm Glenn Sutherland. I'm with AKS Engineering and Forestry. I have with me Mike Morse, actually, here in the audience, Anna Bozich, who should be on Zoom, and also Mimi Dukas, who is on Zoom as well. So we're part of the project team, and we've been working on Kalina at Springbrook for quite a few years now. Obviously, Springbrook has been a big project, a big area of Newburgh, and has been conceptually approved for a very long time. So I'll just speed through all this. We've seen where this site is. Kalina is this area that's surrounded in purple here. It's about 98 acres. Bordered by Mountain View to the south and Hess Creek to the east. There'll be full streets. There's eight phases that were approved in 2023. And 403 homes as part of that. So again, that's part of this larger plan for the area. That's part of the Springbrook District. And this area that's in purple, that's all residential. Although that previous approval did have a small multifamily residential, mid-rise residential, I believe is the zoning for that. That's to the southwest. So again, approved in 2008, so it's been brewing for quite a while. Polish has been working on this since, oh, I'd say about 2021-ish. So that was approved as sub 322-0002. There's eight phases going from Mountain View, which is at the very bottom of the slide here, all the way north to phase eight, which is the kind of furthest extension of Vista that's part of this project. And this particular application, we, we had some, some last kind of tweaks that we needed to make to that subdivision approval. Middle housing is something that kind of came up while we were in the middle of planning all of this. It was always part of the Kalina project, but the laws and standards for that haven't, hadn't yet been set in place. So we kind of included some language for middle housing, not knowing exactly what was going to be adopted by the city or, or provided in guidance by the state, because all of that was just kind of a big moving target at the time. So we have, you can see in that picture on the left there, or on the right, excuse me. The one in the very center of Kalina at Springfield, or Springbrook is the area of detached quadplexes. So those are allowed in code as quote-unquote middle housing. Our original application called those detached quadplexes, but the Springbrook standards specified that those 20-foot lot widths were only for attached homes. So in order to make sure that they worked for this project, we had to modify that from attached homes to middle housing. So the standard is already there. We are just changing what it applies to. So now it matches the rest of the code. Middle housing standards apply to middle housing and not various forms of detached or attached or what have you. There's also a big list of things at the end of that Development Standards Matrix, which is that four-page list of, of standards for the Springbrook District that would apply in the area west of Hess Creek. And I'll get into that a little bit further here on the next slide. But again, modifying phasing, adding phase 1.5 for the Mountain View-Villa intersection. We've been working really closely with the city. Originally, that was planned to be a signal, and now it will be a roundabout. So as we work through the design of that and get everything kind of situated down there, that needed to kind of be broken out just so that we could continue work on phase one while we were simultaneously working on that improvement. So as you can see in the conditions, we've worked with the city to make sure that those improvements are in place prior to occupancy of the homes. We want to make sure that intersection is taken care of at an appropriate time. So that's not going to be put off into the future. And then in general, just because this has been such a long kind of process with multiple phases and lots of moving pieces. When we originally applied in 2022 for that subdivision approval, there was phases proposed. And as time has gone on and we've gotten more work done, we've needed to modify some of those dates. So you'll see that those are, are updated to show kind of a range of construction dates. 2024, 2025, and so on through all eight phases. I had the chance to speak to quite a number of people at the last hearing. So I did want to just restate and clarify some things. This application doesn't include any additional homes. So there's still only 403 homes that are proposed. Staff did mention that there were 420 lots, and that is inclusive of tracts. So there's 403 lots for homes and then open space tracks for weather park or stormwater facilities or actual pathways. Those all add up to the 420 number. And again, we're not proposing anything new as far as housing type. The detached quadplexes were part of that original application. So just wanted to make that clear, because that, that seemed to be a point of confusion with a lot of the folks that I was able to speak to. In general, you saw the drawing that Jeremiah showed with how those detached quadplexes are arranged. That is a parent lot, and that parent lot is 108 feet wide generally. So that would be through middle housing divided into separate lots for each one of the four homes that are on it. A lot of these changes are required by the conditions of approval of the subdivision. So besides the change from attached homes to middle housing, everything that's at the bottom of that table is all because that was required by a condition of approval. And it needed to happen because the, it didn't make sense in, in the way that it was shown there. And just for anyone who might be wondering, grading and clearing would be happening by phase unless it was needed to provide, such as in the case of emergency access through phase three. It'd be done by phase, so working towards the north from Mountain View. And then that lot frontage minimum requirement there, I've, I've kind of outlined at the bottom what it was last time as part of the subdivision approval. The 20 feet was already part of that Springbrook Development Standards, and we're just changing it from the very bottom line there, attached dwelling units to middle housing dwelling units. So like Jeremiah said, we've gone through the conditions of approval and, and we found that we can make the one condition that where the separation, the greater separation was not recommended. We can make that work, and we don't have any issues with any of the other conditions as proposed. So we would hope that you would approve this amended resolution as of yesterday that Jeremiah sent out. And if you have any questions, I will answer those for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Seeing a lot of shaking heads, good. Okay. Chris? No? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Okay. Seeing no other, no other proponents, no other opponents, do we have anybody on Zoom to which to speak? Okay. Very well, unless the applicant has anything else, anything else. Since somebody else wants to talk about this, and we don't have any questions, we'll go ahead and close with testimony at this point and move on to final comments from staff and a recommendation.
No further comments from staff. We would recommend you adopt the updated Resolution 2024-393.
Okay. Do we have any final questions for staff?
Commissioner Wright? On ordinance number 2021-2889, middle housing, page 35 out of 338. In the R1 zone under minimum lot area per dwelling unit for multifamily is per conditional use review. Once again, I'd like to know if you were allowed the 20-foot frontage, what keeps you from going underneath a 1,500-square-foot housing on a lot? And even with the 60% coverage, it's 900 and something feet within the lot that you can put a house on?
So the ordinance you're referencing, I believe, is the middle housing ordinance. So the Springbrook District has its own zoning designation, which has that development matrix we were looking at a little bit earlier is the standards for that entire district for the different zones. The, the area that we're talking about modifying tonight is low-density residential. It's separate from the R1 or R2 zones in the rest of the city. It's still low-density residential, but it's not actually R1 or R2. The minimum lot size in the low-density residential district, the Springbrook District, is 2,900 square feet currently. So they would not be able to go below 2,900 square feet.
This is actually from the Springbrook Master Plan.
So I'm not sure which one. So I know that minimum lot size did get updated last July, I believe it was, as part of the last matrix or mass, master plan update. Before that, I believe it was 1,000 square feet. Get your answer in just a second.
Can I ask a clarifying question of you, Commissioner? So is there a reason you're referencing that resolution or that ordinance rather than referencing the Development Standards Matrix that we're talking about tonight as part of this application? I just wanted to clarify from a, is something different there that you're looking for that you would like us to assist with?
Commissioner Wright, even though you have the matrix, you also have a matrix underneath the Springbrook Master Plan. So which one do you go by?
In, in this case, I would recommend that we go by the one that's part of this application and part of this directly, as opposed to something that came from proceeding it. In theory, those should have the same information. If they don't, we would be happy to look into that and do that. But I, I would say that it, it seems like we might be digging into an area and, and looking for discrepancies that could be discrepancies that have occurred over time. And so I would recommend kind of going with the latest and greatest materials that we have, to the best of our knowledge, which we have reviewed them. And those that are part of the application materials, and specifically, I'm looking at exhibit F. And exhibit F, page three of five, has the lot dimensions and lot coverage associated with low-density residential. And so it seemed like your question was about those, and we'd be happy to answer it. I just want to make sure we're looking in the right places and talking about the same things.
Well, R1, R1 underneath the well, townhouse and lot areas, those are 1,500 square feet. But when you asked them to put it to multifamily, is, because there's not an actual multifamily, only an R1 designation on the matrix. So is it a sub? A sub-zoning of the matrix?
In this case, it wouldn't change the zoning designation. It would just be what's allowed to occur within that zoning designation and the proposed application. And I think Jeremiah is welcome to correct me if I'm getting this crosswise. But the minimum lot dimensions, when we talk about those for this, it, so it lists them by the zoning district associated with this specific master plan. And they do change the minimum lot area depending on some of the typologies there. So this may be what you're referring to. Minimum of 2,900 square feet, except a minimum of 1,500 square feet for attached dwelling units. Minimum 4,500 square feet for triplex dwellings. Minimum 7,000 square feet for quadplex dwellings and cottage clusters. Again, that's exhibit F, page three of five. And I'm looking at the, under low-density residential designation, minimum lot area.
Yes, the, the matrix in the Springbrook Master Plan on page 35 has the different housing types. And the matrix does not, it only has the references for R1 or low-density residential. But it actually doesn't go into townhouses, multi, well, except for the minimum lot area for 1,500 square feet. But to actually get that lot area, you have to have a townhome or a multifamily lot, building on those lots? Does it matter if it's a multifamily housing or a townhouse, whether it's 1,500 feet or less?
Because it does not talk about multifamily housing as multifamily housing, it would not be contemplated, and it would not be allowed at 1,500 square feet. The minimum would be allowed for attached dwelling units if it meets the other kind of definitions that we're working with. But those do vary for other types, like the triplex dwellings, quadplex dwellings, and the cottage clusters that are there. So it would, unfortunately, to me, it feels a little bit like it depends on exactly the project that comes forward and the definitions we're working with at that time. So if it's an attached dwelling, and typically that for us will mean, in most circumstances, townhouses. That's what I would typically expect to fall within them. Jeremiah, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I think you got it right. The attached dwelling is typically a townhouse. We wouldn't necessarily be a multifamily as, as an attached dwelling in most cases.
Thank you, staff. Further questions?
Any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to deliberations. What do we think about this?
Commissioner Wright?
Commissioner Wright, I don't see any problem with the phasing issue, but I do have a problem with the 20-foot frontage myself. The density matrix for an R1, regardless of it being Springbrook, I do believe, is 4.4 or 4.5 units per buildable acre. Now, with the, this kind of density, it's way out of the R1 type of densities that are zoning code required or guidelines by. We've also had some residents come forward last year that this property many, many years ago, over 16 years ago, the state of Oregon did not feel it had the capacity to handle more than a R1 classification. If that is my understanding of what that letter was. Having that high a density in a R1 zone, I am not okay with it. As far as their density and some of our other stuff goes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to add? Just your group?
Just to clarify, the concern that you're addressing is something that we have already approved. That's not what we're discussing here today, right?
So I think I can clarify. So the 20-foot minimum lot width, well, this would affect this current project, would also affect the rest of the low-density residential in the Springbrook District, which has not had a subdivision or any other sort of application come through at this point. So it would affect potentially future applications.
That answer your question? Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion for this or not? Commissioner Newton-Curtis?
Yeah, first of all, let me apologize for not being here on time.
You're really amidly.
A minute's not bad. So I'm a bit confused that the 20 feet minimum is within code, right? Am I understanding?
The 20 feet itself is proposed in the matrix for the Springbrook District. The minimum lot size and most The minimum lot size, in most cases otherwise, is twenty-two feet, depending on the use, um, for middle housing and then twenty-five feet otherwise for residential. If I, uh, I'll make sure that's correct, but that, off the top of my head, yes.
So have, so it sounds like we've reduced the frontage there? No.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'd have to reopen all the hearing and, and.
So let me rephrase and ask staff. Um, so could you explain in what, in, in Laban's terms why we've reduced that and the impact it might have?
So Jeremiah is pulling up some of the details now, and obviously, we can't. If your commission needs to open the public hearing to hear from the applicant. But my understanding and recollection is that currently it's attached dwellings that have a, that twenty-foot minimum lot frontage. And so this would broaden that to middle housing. So it, essentially. Um, but again, I'm speaking out of turn. Our case planner knows this better than I do, and so does the applicant.
I think that explains it for me personally.
Commissioner Wright?
I'm, I'm planning, Commissioner Wright. I move to recommend Planning Commission Resolution two thousand twenty-four, three-nine-three, approval of Kalina at Springbrook subdivision phasing plan into the Springbrook Master Plan with the following exceptions. Deny creation of a minimum twenty-foot frontage for middle housing dwelling units. Deny twenty-foot driveway separation as outlined by staff. All others stand.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second for the motion?
Does anybody else have a approval statement or a denial statement?
So I, I believe the procedure when, yes, I believe with the procedure when there's a motion with no second is that the motion, uh, fails to, to proceed to a vote. Okay? So. So, so yes, do we have another motion? Uh, that is different than that?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Griffiths?
That the Planning Commission adopts Resolution two thousand twenty-four, three-nine-three, recommending to the Newburgh City Council approval of the Springbrook Master Plans, uh, the amendments to conditions in Exhibit D and as it depicted in Exhibit F, except for the request to amend Development Standards Matrix text to allow a twenty-foot minimum driveway separation standard for quadplex and duplex lots.
Well, I have a motion. I have a second to the motion. I have a second. Commissioner Newton-Curtis, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
No.
Abby Seitz?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Linda Newton-Curtis?
Yes.
Very well, I, I believe the vote is five to one. And motion passes. Thank you to the applicant for, uh, coming tonight, and we're happy to indulge your continuance. Moving on, thank, thank you, commissioners, for that well-consideration. Uh, moving on, we have items from staff, or do we not? Maybe something?
Uh, we basically put this on so that if you have questions for staff, you can do this. But primarily, that update's going to happen at your next meeting, which is scheduled just a week from now. So you'll be getting your packets. It's a relatively short agenda. Um, the one thing that I think is fairly fun that we're doing is we do have, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if fun is, the fun, fun's not the right word, maybe, but.
You're not having fun?
For some of you, it might be fun, but we do have.
Send him to the donut, no.
We do have the City Hall Historic Landmark Review going to Historic Preservation Commission on May twenty-eighth. So that's been routed for agency review already. And it's going to be, those materials are going up on our website shortly, so they'll be available for public review. So anyone that's generally interested, we haven't had a whole lot of historic landmarks reviews. Um, so I've been told that we've had three in the last ten or eleven years. It's a fairly low number, and this is for City Hall, so a fairly well-known site. So if you're interested, um, that'll be up there and you can find it. But happy to answer any questions on things that are coming up, too. The Enterprise Zone designation was good. We had more people than we did in two thousand fourteen when it was initially designated. So it's just, it's mostly, it's open to the public for attendance, but it's really outreach to the taxing districts so that they're aware of what we're doing since there's an implication of it affecting their funds, depending on how it's used. Probably minimally, because that's usually how, at least here how it's worked so far. But you'd love to see it do so well that it has a, a bigger implication. So we had, instead of four people, which we had in two thousand fourteen, I think we had six. So. It was, but we had the OSU extension, we had the school district there, we had the assessor and staff that were there, uh, CPRD attended, and then city staff were there. And so we had some good conversations on that topic as well. It's always nice to connect with some of our taxing districts to see if they have any questions about what we're up to, that we can help them with.
Very well, thank you. Do we have any items from commissioners?
I'm just curious. I should have asked them. When do they plan to begin construction? Do we know that?
So we have issued their grading permit at their own risk, uh, based on what happens with this. Um, and then we are getting pretty close to approving their public improvements for Phase One outside of this area. So they have started clearing out some trees as of last week, I believe. And so you'll start seeing that. Um, as I think was mentioned, we do have a page on the planning webpage, planning webpage of the website under Frequently Asked Questions, which lists all the land use decisions that have occurred, that are currently occurring, including what we're talking about tonight. Um, and so if people have questions, they obviously can contact staff, but that should hopefully give them idea what's happening. Um, we haven't got a lot of interest yet, but I have a feeling things will probably speed up when, uh, they see some more trees cleared out and some grading going on out there.
Okay, if nobody has anything else, the only thing I have is a shout-out to Director Siegel. Nice, nice to see you. And I think from, at that point, we can adjourn. Thank you all for coming.